We'll call the meeting to order. Please stand and join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. President Sarah Bets is traveling today, so I'm filling in in her role, so I thank you in advance for your patience as I go through this. Can I get a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the meetings held September 26th and October 3rd, please?
Double.
Second. Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That passes. For tonight, for people wishing to address the school board on non-agenda items, we do have kind of three different topics. So we have one person for one topic, but one person for another topic, and then we have six people for one topic. So how this will work is that typically the maximum number that one person can speak is five minutes. And if there's more than one person, then the maximum time, actually, if there's more than three people, the maximum time is 15. So what I thought I would do is start with the two people who are kind of on their own topics. And if the six people that want to speak on the same topic, you are more than welcome to each take your own, take your time, and that's about two and a half minutes each. Or if you have, if you wanted to organize and have three people be spokespeople, you could have five minutes for each of those three people. So whatever you decide is fine, but I'm going to start with the other topic so that if you guys wanted to make some plans, you're welcome to do that. Okay? Just a reminder for public comments. This is where we take comments from individuals wishing to address the board about a district-related subject. An individual wishing to address the board on a district-related issue must sign up prior to the meeting, which you have done. The speaker is limited to five minutes regardless of the number of subjects the person wishes to cover. If, if multiple people sign up to speak, the total amount on that topic will be limited to 15 minutes per side. Anyone addressing the board must give his or her name and address. The speaker may not give oral complaints regarding district personnel or personnel actions. Complaints regarding district personnel are to be addressed to the superintendent in private or in writing to the superintendent and board members. The speaker may not offer personal attacks against any individual. The speaker may not give oral complaints identifying individual students. Complaints regarding individual students are to be addressed to the superintendent in private or in writing. And the board president, at her discretion, may request the administration or another board member to respond to a person addressing the board immediately following the input, or may direct the administration to respond in writing. So just wanted to review that. So I'm going to start with Amy Bruner. If you would come and state your name and address, please. And then we do have our little reminder. We'll give you a reminder at one minute left and at 30 seconds, and you have five minutes. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Amy Bruner, and I'm at 3420 South Alpine Avenue. And I'm just going to make it quick. Be way less than five minutes. I was in front of you a month and a half, two months ago, to ask about provisions for busing. I have a child who goes to Ben rifle Middle School, and there was some challenges with regard to that, to busing in the walk zone. And there were some parents in my neighborhood who had concerns about continued busing. And you guys worked it out, and we're, my kid's getting bused, and we're happy. And so I just wanted to say thanks, and that's all.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Okay. Next, we have Chad Bishop. If you want to come to the podium and state your name and address, please. And again, you have five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Chad Bishop. I live at 7405 South Valencia Drive here in Sioux Falls. I guess I titled this "Diffusing Political Tension and Education Continued." So first, let me begin by saying that my assumption is that all teachers, administrators, and staff share my goodwill and best intentions for our children and our community. When I last addressed this body, I asked you to consider the following. I invite you to create a forum for the discussion of sensitive topics like critical race theory, social-emotional learning, diversity, inclusion, and equity. Help the community understand what the Sioux Falls School District means when it uses these terms. Help diffuse the artificial tension that arises from your constituents, assuming the worst, when they see the results of policies incorporating these terms and related policies in other communities. Today, I again ask, is it possible to do bad things with good words? In my statements from last October, I specifically asked what diversity means with respect to your hiring and firing practices. I followed up with this inquiry last month. Two weeks ago, I asked you what the district means when it uses the word equity. I touched on the overt racism and racial discrimination that was seemingly captured in the Minneapolis Teachers Union's contract negotiations to excess or lay off teachers who are non-persons of color first. I asked that the district stay clear of being racist and using racial discrimination in their hiring and firing practices. Last October, when the district said that, "An increase," this is a quote from the transcript on YouTube, so you apologize, "increase the diversity, and we continue to use that we want the number to grow and to be a more accurate reflection of the student population that we serve." And this is specifically referring to teacher diversity. So I ask, what do you mean by this? What do you mean by, do you mean cultural diversity? Do you mean diversity of thought? Or are we so shallow as to just mean racial diversity? For example, if we were to hire a Yale-educated, African-American, yet woke teacher in the hopes that they would better reflect the first and second-generation Swahili-speaking refugee community here in Sioux Falls, are we so shallow as to think that this achieves our stated goal just because they look the same? Are you aware how socially conservative the refugee population is? Have you ever attended a church service? How about the Nepali-speaking community and one of their home church services? What about the Spanish-speaking Catholic Latino community? Are you seeking to check the box on racial diversity and run the risk of offending students and their parents, both culturally and intellectually, every day? Again, I'd ask for more discussion, more debate, not less. Set up a forum, invite the public. And lastly, again, I ask, is it possible to do bad things with good words? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chad. Okay, so then we'll move on to our last topic. Do you, do you all want to speak? Is there somebody that you want to speak on your behalf? And is your name one of my pink slips?
It is. It's Jason Knutson. I guess we had a string of speakers, and we were hoping to just use up our time, and whoever ended didn't get to speak. Is that okay?
Everyone will get about two and a half minutes.
Okay.
So as long as everybody stays within that timeframe, or I suppose if somebody goes more...
I think our, our goal was if someone ran over that, the people at the end of the list just wouldn't get to speak, to use up the 12, 15 minutes. Okay.
So one person can't speak more than five?
Sure. No, mine will be less than five.
Okay.
Mine will be more than two, so.
Okay.
That's where the conundrum happens.
That's right. So if you can just state your name and your address, please. Thank you.
My name is Jason Knutson. I live at 5804 South Lazy Ridge. Dr. Stavum and the board member, thank you for our opportunity to speak on behalf of the Lincoln gymnastics parents in support of our team and to highlight our concerns for the plan to transition the Sioux Falls program to All-American gymnastics. Our daughter has been a part of the Lincoln team since seventh grade. She was that, prior to that, a club gymnast since the age of two. This story is similar for many of her Lincoln teammates, and because of that, most of us are intimately, intimately familiar with both club and school-sponsored programs. So because of this experience, we're advocating for the school programs to maintain their independence. Although it may seem like we're intentionally bringing this up at the 11th hour, to this date, neither the gymnasts nor the parents have received any official communication from the athletic department regarding the significant change in how the program will be managed. Rather, we only recently heard it through the rumor mill from others who are concerned and recognize it for the threat it poses to the future of school-sponsored gymnastics in Sioux Falls. Please allow me to outline our primary concerns about these proposed changes as we understand them. The times that are being proposed for practice are weekdays, 6:00 AM to 8:00 AM and 7:00 to 9:00 PM, with further restrictions on the evening practice demanding fewer gymnasts in the 7:00 to 7:30 slot. Additionally, with the time limitations placed on Wednesday evening practice, practices, this effectively means we will have one last day per week. These teams are an, these times are an unreasonable demand on a number of levels, particularly for the middle school members of our team. This will not allow students who must work the ability to participate and still maintain this role in their families. Many of the students on these teams maintain rigorous academic schedules that will force their studies late into the night as they will not arrive home till 9:30, not to mention the sacrifice of sleep they must make for this. How will the students from the 6:00 AM slot be able to make it to school by 8:15? Also, these times require the students to be driving early or late at night in the dark, often in clement, in clement weather, all the way to Harrisburg. Additionally, many of the other evening school activities will have to be missed to attend practice at these times as the entire schedule is set up to work around after-school practice routine. These times are offered alone, these times we are offered alone will be an insurmountable barrier to many of the students and families, particularly those living far to the north and west of this gym, and even more, even more so for the financially disadvantaged families. In the same vein, most of us have been to All-American and are aware of the current schedule and layout of the gym. Likely, we are being offered these times so as not to disrupt the current club's gymnast schedule. While this is understandable from the gym's perspective, we have significant concern that the high school gymnast needs will continue to be secondary to the needs of these gymnasts. Additionally, currently during the time of overlap with the gymnasts there at All-American, our teams find themselves struggling for warm-up space and equipment to use until the others have left. This combined with fewer preseason open gym sessions and a lack of Wednesday practice further diminishes our gymnast's ability to prepare and train for the season. Another significant fact is that additional preseason open gyms, all being crucial to prepare for the season and refine their routines, will now come at an additional cost, further straining many of the families who want their student to have a chance to participate fulsomely in the gymnastics, but that they cannot bear the additional financial burden. We understand that the entirety of the public school's equipment will be given to All-American at no cost, while we are struggling to understand why this would be the case when the value of that equipment is almost certainly into the hundreds of thousands of dollars. Much of this was purchased in no small part by parent and booster club funds. This money was donated to ensure the gymnasts had safe, reliable equipment to practice on when the budget did not allow their purchase in a timely manner. However, donating them to a private gymnastic club with no guarantee of when or if we'll ever be able to use them will be a bitter pill to swallow for many of the boosters and parents. Lastly, and most importantly, this transition would profoundly jeopardize the safety of these gymnasts in many ways. The district has struggled to maintain minimal coaching numbers for a few years now. After these changes have been made known, we now only have two coaches for the entire city, with not much optimism for recruiting more at this point. This places the gymnastics gymnast-coach ratio at an unacceptably high level, resulting in a dangerous lack of supervision and spotting, forcing gymnasts not attempt any advanced moves or try them unassisted. No reputable gym would ever allow anything close to a 30-to-1 ratio that this plan engenders, so neither should our program accept it irrespective of our practice location ultimately. And although we have been fortunate to have no serious injuries, as the season wears on, access to trainers becomes an integral part of staying healthy and avoiding more serious injuries. We are told that there will be no access to trainers at the All-American facility, and that gymnasts who need trainer attention will have to seek it right after school. This isn't realistic four hours prior to practice and does nothing for the needs after practice. We're all struggling to understand the rationale behind this proposed plan because for the life of us, we cannot see any advantage to the program or how it increases access for the students of this district. Kids who don't have aspirations to become athletic and Olympic athletes would just love and want a chance to participate in gymnastics, to contribute to and to benefit from the camaraderie of bills, to take pride in being a member of their school's team, to have an opportunity to compete in a sport that they maybe couldn't otherwise afford. Absent a cogent explanation, this feels to us like a step-down plan to phase out school-sponsored gymnastics.
Thank you. I'm sorry, your time is up. Your name and address, please.
My name is Ava Knutson. I'm at 5804 South Lazy Ridge Place. Good evening, Dr. Stavum and school board members. My name is Ava Knutson, and I'm a senior at Lincoln High School, co-captain of the varsity gymnastics team. I'm speaking behalf of, of not only my teammates, but many girls who compete for the Sioux Falls School District. I first joined this team when I was 11 years old, a seventh grader coming out of the Excel program at All-American. One of the first things that my coach Les ever said to me was, "Yes, I'm here to teach you about gymnastics, but more importantly, I'm here to teach you about life." And now, as I stand here mere months from graduation, I can confidently say that he has done just that. High school gymnastics has allowed me to participate in the sport that I love while also maintaining a healthy balance between my social, academic, and work lives. Virtually, everybody else on our team is involved with more than one activity, and I speak for all of us when I say that a practice time of 7:00 to 9:00 PM or 6:00 to 8:00 AM will greatly burden those of us in choir, band, track, work, and AP classes. Five of us on varsity are seniors, which means five of us are undergoing the college application process as we speak. All five of us are high achievers, embarking on very different paths, but all important nonetheless. Personally, high school gymnastics was a massive part of my application in places such as leadership in sports and extracurricular activities. It was only due to the accessibility of the sport over my six years that I was able to include it with such magnitude on my application. I see great futures in the middle schoolers and underclassmen on my team, and I stand here today to advocate for them and speak against their potential chance to lose such an opportunity that I have. In our gymnastics room at Lincoln, there is a wall with signatures from seniors on the team dating back to the 1980s. Aware that I may be the last, aware that our names will be forgotten under fresh paint, I proudly, proudly signed my name. Some of my greatest friendships blossomed in that gym, some of the happiest, and consequently, some of the saddest days happened in that gym. But because of Les and because of our wonderful teammates, that gym was a safe place, safe space for all of us, a place where we went and could unapologetically feel what we needed to feel. If this contract is signed, we will not only lose our home, but the security of it. High school gymnastics has never been about perfection and state titles, at least not for me. High school gymnastics is about offering a welcoming, accessible environment for girls who simply want to do the sport that they love. As a six-year member on the team, as an academically successful student athlete, and as the 11-year-old girl who had the chance to continue doing gymnastics, I ask the school board members to seriously consider this detrimental effect this will have on many young women and their passions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Name and address, please.
My name is Les Coyne, 5308 West 56th Street, Vice President Ryder, Dr. Stavum, members of the board. My name is Les Coyne. I've been the head gymnastics coach at Lincoln for 23 years, and this is my 30th year of coaching high school gymnastics in South Dakota. I want to thank you for this opportunity to speak to you tonight about the contract between Sioux Falls Public Schools and AAGA that was supposed to be on the agenda tonight, but since has been removed. I'm concerned that it was removed because the season starts in 19 days. The contract that you were supposed to approve tonight is not the contract that Kevin Knapp, the other coach, and I have agreed to. Kevin and I were asked to attend a meeting in May, approximately five months ago, and at this meeting, we were given three possible options to save gymnastics in Sioux Falls. We were given option A, B, and C. Option A was crazy. Option B was All-American. Option C was whatever Kevin and I could come up with. So we mainly chose option B, that was AAGA. It was presented that we'd only have to do this for one year, an addition would be built on, and then we could go back to normal times. In this contract, that is not in there. Kevin and I asked at this meeting if we could share this information with the parents and the gymnasts so we could get some feedback from them on this, and we were told we are not able to share this with them. I told them at this meeting that if we did option B, I would lose my assistant coach of 10 years, and that did happen. Having two young children and a husband, she was not able to coach anymore. So she went to her boss, resigned her position of gymnastics coach, and was told that it's pretty much just a one-year sabbatical, and next year she could come back and coach. On September 16th and 17th was the first time that I've ever seen this full contract, and Kevin and I met on Sunday, went over it, and then we sent people, can't say their names, our corrections and stuff and our concerns, and still nothing about the date of the new gym was on there, and still, we did not like that equipment part of the contract. On September 29th, an email saying that the contract was vetted by both AAGA and Sioux Falls Public Schools was sent, and we're waiting for Gene's signature, and the school board's approval would be done tonight at this meeting. This is when I decided that I needed to let the parents know and let the gymnasts know of what was going on, that I didn't think this contract was in the best interest of Sioux Falls gymnastics. On Friday, October 7th, I got a text and then a phone call about this email that I had sent out to the parents. Then later, I got another phone call about the same email that I sent. Then on Sunday, October 9th, the contract... Then on Sunday, October 9th, the contract approval was pulled from this agenda. That's when we found out about it, that last, on Sunday, that it was been pulled from this meeting. I just, I don't understand why it's pulled when we only have so much time before season starts. In closing, I stress to you, that's a school board, think about the concerns from the people that you just heard from. Think about what the parents are telling you, the gymnasts, the coaches, and the public. Please do not approve this contract as written. Please let us keep gymnastics at the school this year. Let's have true meetings about what is best for gymnastics or what is best going forward with the sport of gymnastics in Sioux Falls. I thank you for your time.
Four minutes left. You have a total of four minutes left. Your name and address, please.
My name is Rebecca Magr. My address is 6429 West 56th Street, Sioux Falls. I am very appreciative for this time to speak to you as well. I'm proud to say that I'm a Sioux Falls School District employee. I'm a coach, and I am a graduate of Lincoln High School here in Sioux Falls. Lincoln has been my home for the past 20 years, and I'm so proud of all the kids that showed up today because it's like having my own kids again. Sorry. That speech was, Eva's speech wasn't perfection. I want to really reiterate something that Jason said, and that's that this is a huge opportunity for kids who don't have the money to go to a club gym. I grew up as that kid. I had a single parent. She was the one who worked two jobs to take care of all of us and tried to put us in a sport, play an instrument, and make sure we had a job. In order to make sure that we could do those three things, she worked overtime to make sure that we had everything we need. What I ask of you now is to not take that opportunity away from another girl who wants to do a high school sport, who wants to do gymnastics, who wants to be a part of something in their building, in their district, something to create school pride. And I found that at Lincoln, and all of these girls have found that at Lincoln as well. So I just ask that you think of the one thing that maybe your child loves or that your niece or nephew or what have you, and imagine if that were about to be taken away. This is a very emotional day for a lot of us here, and I can't stress enough how important high school gymnastics has been to not only crafting my career, but you'll be receiving emails from some of my gymnasts as well that were able to jump into leadership positions and go to law school and put that on their applications in order to show that they were a part of something and that they were part of Lincoln gymnastics and that they were part of Sioux Falls gymnastics. And I think that that's a huge testament to our district. I think it's a legacy, and I don't want to see that taken away for any other child or student in our district. So I just ask that you consider, especially since I was the head coach for Washington for a couple of years, consider the time and the times of the practices, but also consider the fact that most of the Washington gymnasts that planned to come out for gymnastics, when they were told they would have to drive themselves to Lincoln, which is not even quite as far as some of the Jefferson or Roosevelt kids would have to come, but they quit gymnastics because they said, "Yeah, I can't afford the gas," or "I can't do that," or "I can't drive across town in the winter. My parents don't let me." So please consider that. Consider the kids in this district who really want to be a part of gymnastics and a part of something in their schools and show some pride for that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. One minute. We have one minute left. Name and address.
Lana Bauer White, 1101 South Monticello Avenue. And I was the O'Gorman Head Gymnastics Coach from 1994 to 2006, and we've always worked out at a facility. It's been very tough for O'Gorman High School to do that, but we're lucky to have a good place right now. I want to share an experience we had at All-American. We had worked out there for several years and had a contract, and one year, we started the season, and about a few weeks in, somehow it hadn't gotten signed between our school system and All-American, and in the middle, he doubled the prices on us, and we had no place to go. So I really want you guys to be super careful of looking at this contract and what it says because Les has already said it's changed since what he was shown. We were told it was going to be doubled. We couldn't afford it. And so, thank goodness, Roosevelt High School, we had to go work out there three days a week and only go to All-American twice a week because of the price that he increased. So it wasn't a good experience. We are now at a different gym and very happy there, but I really want you to look at that contract over. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you to everybody for their comments tonight. We appreciate that. And then I know that there is a meeting tomorrow night, I believe, with parents and some administration to answer questions further and to continue the discussion, so hopefully many of you are able to attend that as well. Thank you. 4:30 in the Lincoln Library, for those who didn't know. We have nobody wishing to speak on any agenda items, and I will pause. And if people don't want to stay for the entire meeting, you will not hurt my feelings at all, so I'm going to pause. So if anybody wants to leave, they sure can. All right. Can I get a motion and a second to approve the agenda for tonight?
Move.
Second.
All right. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, sign by by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. That passes, and we have the good news report.
Thank you, and I'm pleased to bring you another two-part good news report. It's always great when we have lots of good news to share. We are going to start this evening with Counseling Coordinator Patty Lake Torbert, who is here with representatives from the Sioux Empire United Way to share information about funding that allows district social workers to fill the gaps for families in need of food. So I'll invite Patty to come forward.
I swear I have the best job ever. I haven't been to the school board that often, but it's always about good things. For the third year, the United Way has given the Sioux Falls School District $100,000 in gift cards to help families. This is not a gift that we were expecting, but so, so grateful for. These are gift cards that are distributed to families through our social workers, our counselors, our liaisons. It was a process that was developed during kind of the height of COVID, and still a process that we use. The need has continued, though, as we move forward, as we see families living with food insecurity, for our families living in poverty, and for our families that do not meet the guidelines for free and reduced lunch. So who are some of these families and students that are being represented by receiving these gift cards? I put out, I was telling earlier, that I put out an email and saying, you know, "Give me some stories," and oh my gosh, my email was filled with stories of people that had received these gift cards and what a difference it made. Just to highlight a few, it's the pregnant teenager with a limited budget but still coming to school and still making education her priority and was able to do that with a little bit of help. It's the new family to Sioux Falls that was homeless, but now both parents are employed and have secured housing but needed just a little bit of help at a certain time. It's the family facing the electricity bill or the electricity being turned off, but were able to swap out for one week, being able to pay for food this way, and then being able to pay the electric bill with money that they had set aside for food. The single dad that needed a detergent and hygiene products, but the next paycheck wasn't for about two weeks away. And then the last one, well, there's many more, but the last one I'm going to highlight is a family that was still hit hard with COVID. The high school students were able to finish, one particular student in the family was able to finish their CNA certification to their Health Careers course at the CT Academy and is on track for pre-med. So, pretty impressive. So come on up. I'd like to introduce to you at this time and recognize the President of the Sioux Empire United Way, Alan H. Turner II, and also the Community Impact Director, Christina Reese. And I'd like you to recognize them for this. Yes.
And I just wanted to let the board and Dr. Stavum know how much we appreciate this partnership, being able to directly impact those lives and through the schools, being able to identify those families, those students, and those individuals that need the help. Thank you for the work that you do every day. Appreciate it.
And I'm just going to interrupt before you take the mic, Christina. Is Alan, you began your tenure in July, May? All right. So relatively new to our community and diving right in, and so we want to formally welcome you to Sioux Falls and appreciate the work on behalf of our school district. And it's been good to see Alan already leading the strategic planning process right away and, you know, some things that kind of greeted you as you came in the door. So job well done and welcome.
And I just wanted to add, you know, this fall, every fall, is kind of the time where people can pledge to United Way through their employers. And so for anybody who's wondering, what does that money do? I think a lot of times we hear about things like Girl Scouts or, you know, some different nonprofit organizations that benefit, and maybe Girl Scouts isn't one, so sorry if I misspoke, but, you know, there's different organizations, but this is obviously a huge need that many people don't even know about likely. And so a gift that size really is a significant gift to probably hundreds, maybe even thousands of kids over the course of the school year who would really take advantage of those things, simply from detergent, you know, someone who needs deodorant, somebody who needs, you know, something that their parents just can't provide for them. So really impactful gift that if people who are listening or watching have the opportunity to participate in providing that, they can do that as well by their employer donating. So thank you very much for the support.
Thank you. Thank you.
The next part is good news from the Sioux Falls Public Schools Education Association Executive Director Allison Struck. She's here with a quarterly update that includes a focus on three programs that the foundation is working on. So I'll have Allison come forward.
All right. Well, good evening, school board members. We're excited to be here tonight, and one of the first things we're going to share is just an update on the guitar partnership with Pepper Entertainment. Jared Johnson, the CEO, is going to join us tonight, and he had a last-minute conflict, but his accountant Terry Bott is with us representing Pepper. And we announced this partnership, I think, in June or July this summer, and we started a beginning guitar class at the four high schools. There's 25 students in each class. There's already a waitlist for the spring, but the goal was really to engage our students who may not have had exposure to band or orchestra or choir. You know, we're reaching a different demographic of students. And Deanne, Ben Schumacher in her department, he visited Washington High School and filmed a short video, so you can hear from the students the impact that this guitar class I was at Jefferson yesterday, and they had in-service, and they had 180 staff there, and the technology wasn't working, and that was my fear for tonight, that we would try and get this video to work, and we would have technical difficulties.
This computer was just swapped out today. So our.
There's a mute on there. She just muted it, but it was unmuted before. We can surprise someone.
Guitars, it won't hurt anything to be able to learn how to play a few chords here and there.
And it's the rest.
When they announced that they were doing it, I played guitar in eighth grade and then stopped, so I kind of just wanted to do something that was music and something that was fun and easy, but also like a little bit challenging.
Every day, we go in, we grab our guitars, and then we'll start with like a warm-up, something a little easier, and then we'll probably, most days, we learn new chords because none of us have played, so everything is new, which is really fun. So we'll learn new chords, we'll play some songs. Sometimes we play like sound off, so like half the group will play, and then the other half will play, so it's like different every day.
I've played piano for most of my life. I've been learning to try and play the guitar for a few months now. I saw the class, first year, I decided to take it. It's pretty fun.
I needed an art credit, and I was going to take dance two because I took dance one, but I had AP Spanish the same class period, so I was like, well, I got to find another art credit. And my counselor was like, "Oh, well, they're introducing a guitar class. Do you want to try that?" And I was like, "Of course, of course I want to try that. I really want to learn how to play the guitar, and I haven't gotten to take a music class at Washington yet," so this was like the perfect opportunity. It just aligned perfect.
It's music. It's easy but also challenging, and learning guitars, it won't hurt anything to be able to learn how to play a few chords here and there, and the guitar is this really fun instrument to play, and the class is super, super chill.
It's a class for everyone, honestly, because kids that know how to play can get practice, kids that don't know how to play can learn, and then kids that kind of just want something to do that's more hands-on. And it's a different environment. It's like you're in a band room instead of a regular classroom, so it's like a nice change of scenery with more hands-on instead of just listening to a lecture, which I really like.
Yeah, it's a lot of fun. Yeah, it's fun to go play the guitar with friends.
Yeah, I would like to say thank you. It's a good break in the day, going to this experience and starting, I'm going to play guitar for 50 minutes. It's also really relaxing to be able to just go play a fun instrument like the guitar.
I want to say a big thank you because I really, really, really love this class, and it's a great opportunity. It's something that I wouldn't have gotten time for because I'm in multiple APs, I'm in a lot of extracurriculars, and so I'd have never gotten the chance to play the guitar and actually discover that I enjoy playing the guitar. And it's really nice because I've tried band instruments, I've tried orchestra instruments, and nothing really stuck, but this one was, this is really fun. And I take it home, and I show my parents and stuff, so I'm just really happy that they put this together.
So like the students said, we'd just like to extend our gratitude to Pepper, to Terry, and to Jared. With this initial investment, the district was able to purchase the guitars and the curriculum. Going forward, they'll be donating a portion of every ticket sold back to the Sioux Falls School District, and then those dollars will help enhance our fine arts curriculum. So thank you so much for the donation. Next, I just wanted to take a minute to promote public school proud grants. We have opened the application. Any teacher in the district can apply for up to $10,000. Teachers will have eight weeks to submit, so we will close the application on December 5th, and then the proposals will be reviewed by a group of administrators, the tech team, and the grants committee, and then we will announce the awards in the spring of 2023. And last, we have been very busy the last couple of weeks doing our goodwill tour and staff appreciation events. Vern ID Motor Cars has provided a generous gift to the foundation so that we can provide treats to staff in every building. This week, we were at Jefferson, McGovern, CTE, Pettigrew, and John Harris, and I think we have seven or eight stops next week. So the purpose is really to go in and thank staff for everything that they do and then to share information about our grant programs. And then this year, we also received a significant donation from the Seed for Success Foundation to go in and provide meals and special treats to the staff members in our title building. So we provided a catered meal lunch to staff at Terry Redlin today. We'll be at Lorby Anderson and Horace Mann tomorrow, and then next week, we're going to try a pop-up coffee bar in partnership with Scooters at Whittier Middle School. So teachers will be able to order their specialty iced coffee drink. So again, the purpose is twofold. We're trying to build out our teacher appreciation efforts and then also share information about our grant program for educators. So thank you.
Thank you very much. I love that you're targeting, you know, the populations in our schools, both students and teachers. In regards to the guitar class, we're always looking for classes that can kind of engage students who maybe haven't found that spot, and I think one of the students said that great, like, "I tried band, and I tried orchestra, and it just didn't fit, but this seemed like a really good fit for me." So anytime we can really widen the classroom opportunities. So anytime we can really widen the classroom opportunities for our students is a benefit to everybody. So thank you for your current and future partnership and continuing to make that a great program. And thank you for your work, Allison. All right. There were no new conflicts of interest to approve today. Can I get a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda, please?
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That passes. And then I have 10A, one and two to Sanford. Can I get a motion and a second for approval of that?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And that passes with three ayes and one abstention from myself. And we are now to the reports of the superintendents. Mr. Morrison.
Good evening, Dr. Stavon School Board. I was here a month ago to give you some preliminary enrollment numbers. And so now I'm coming back to you with our final enrollment numbers. So again, the purpose is to provide the final FTE numbers based on the active enrollments as of the last Thursday of September, which in this case would have been September 30th. So that's the date that we reconcile with the state. And then that's what eventually our funding is driven off for the rest of the year. Pleased to tell you that we saw very little change. I think on our preliminary basis, we were about 194 more than where we were last year and we ended up at just over 200 versus prior year. So that's good news that we had that growth. Junior K, down a little bit, which we saw in the preliminary numbers and same with pre-K. So overall, very little change on the total on pre-K and junior from last time. If you look at it over time, you can see that we now have gotten back to where we were pre-pandemic. We had a, you know, during that COVID year, we had a very small kindergarten class for whatever reason. And we just now started to rebound on that. And then this year finally got back to where higher than we were during the 1920 school year. So that's good to see the last couple of years of steady growth there. Looking at it by grade level, you can see this is basically a function of how each grade rolls through to the next. So we have, in elementary school, we grew by about 163 kids. And that's really because the kindergarten class was bigger than the outgoing fifth grade class. And so what's good news on here is that our kindergarten class is still in that 2,000 range, which is where we've seen it historically, other than the one year there. Middle school down a little bit. Again, a function of how each class rolls through. And in high school, we're seeing an increase. So that's kind of the general flow by grade level when you look at it. Looking at it by school, I think I pointed out last time there were a couple of areas that we were on the elementary school. We saw a lot of growth in Rosa Parks School area, which is something we continue to watch just from an ongoing boundary perspective. And then we saw growth again at the Hayward and, and Renberg as well. So kind of on both extreme sides, extreme east and extreme west, kind of seeing increased growth patterns there as we knew there would be over time as those develop out there. Middle school, you can see, has stayed very much flat to where it was in the prior year. And we didn't really anticipate much, much change there. And in the high schools, you can see, again, we expected Jefferson to grow because of the now having a full, you know, ninth grade through 12th grade. And that was offset at Lincoln and Roosevelt. So again, nothing too alarming that we saw there. Very predictable. And then the last thing I did want to point out is that, you know, in the 2021 year with the pandemic, we saw our open enrollment. These are kids open enrolling into our district. We saw that take a dip in the 2021 year. We grew last year and we grew again this year. So open enrollment is starting to, we're seeing more kids come into the district. And then what this chart will tell you is where they're coming from, their home district. So you can see our biggest areas where kids are coming from is the Brandon area, the Harrisburg area and T and Tri Valley, so that, that west side over there. And then you can see on the right-hand side, the schools that they are going into. So obviously the Spanish immersion program is a big attractor for our district. And you can see Lincoln High School and Edison Middle School probably were again where that cohort of Spanish immersion is moving through. So again, good news to see that return back to where it was back in the 2019 timeframe. And so really the final step for us is that we will reconcile down to the FTE with the state and, and Dr. Stavon will sign off on that funding at the end of this month. And then Todd will start getting the checks rolling in. But the good news is it's, it's higher enrollment than it was last year. So with that, I would ask you to acknowledge the Fall 2022 Final Enrollment Report.
All right. Anybody have comments or questions?
Well, it's good to see our numbers bouncing back. And I think that's very informative, especially with looking at new elementary school building and so forth, where, where we're going to need that growth and what does it, both as a city as well as our school district. So good information.
And I think in the next, the next school board meeting, Deanne will give an update on demographics and how those have changed. So kind of tie in with that.
Yeah. And I think to your point, Cynthia, when you talk about new schools, you know, we don't want to wait until it's too late. And so it's that being proactive and, and thinking ahead and saying, here's our numbers. We're growing and continuing to see that trend. It's nice that we're back at that pre-pandemic rate. And now we obviously hope to kind of continue to grow in that 200. And so we will need at least one elementary school and then they will all just kind of funnel into the, to the right remaining schools too. So good to see us back on that track again.
I'm, I'm just happy to see kind of normal trajectory restored. And I think that was a big question mark and it is still across many school districts in many places about enrollment and what, what that was going to look like. So I'm just kind of happy to see the predictable pattern. And that's a lot easier for planning purposes.
Yeah.
All right. Can I get a motion to acknowledge the report on Sioux Falls enrollment?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion passes. Can I get a motion to move into executive session, SCL 1-25-2 parent two?
So moved.
Second.
We are in, moving into executive session. Thank you.